Okay, well, good evening. My name is Catherine All and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I want to welcome you to the North Kitsap School Board Candidate Virtual Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that doesn't support or oppose political parties or candidates. We hold candidate forums every year because of our basic belief that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. So there you have it. We would like to acknowledge that our homes and gathering places in North Kitsap School District are within the ancestral territories of the Suquamish and Squallum peoples. And those two tribes are an important part of this district. The candidates, in order they will be on the ballot, are Mike Desmond. Wait, here we go. And Natasha Menger for District Two, Beverly Godfrey and Terri Schumacher for District Four, and Stacy Mills and Melanie Miller for District Five. However, Melanie has dropped out of the race for family reasons, but her name will still appear on the ballot. She wanted me to announce that she asked the public to please support Stacy Mills with full confidence in Stacy's dedication and care for our community. The rules of tonight's forum are that we are dispensing with opening statements and we'll start right in with questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer questions submitted by the public. Following that, each candidate will have one and a half minutes for a closing statement. Each one of you deserves our thanks for stepping up and running for office. Please be respectful of each other. You each deserve that. Okay, starting right in with questions. The first question is, why are you running for the board? And what do you hope to accomplish if elected? And Mike will start with you.
Okay, thank you. So first, I am running for reelection as the School Board Director for Position Two. Mainly, I'm doing that real solely is to serve the children and parents of the North Kitsap School District and community. I have a couple of main priorities. At first is safety. I feel that all students should feel safe in all of our schools. Also fairness, all students should have the same ability to learn as all other students regardless of their background, their abilities, their family's income. And then lastly, I want to make sure that we have the most modern school facilities as possible. You know, we need to continue funding our schools so that we can modernize our facilities.
Thank you. Natasha?
Hi, thanks. So I decided to run because I value community and I really would like to improve the communication between the board and our students and staff and community members. I think communication is more than a one-way street. And I would really like to revisit the policies. These are the simple things to do, revisit the policies around who, public comment, and the committees, and really engaging our community. I, that's what I do is collaborate. I love to work on teams. I love to work with people and I want to serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly?
Hi, yes, I'm running for school board because I've been a teacher in North Kitsap for a long time. And now that I'm retired, I want to find another way that I can support the families and kids in our community. I agree with Natasha, we need to find better ways to communicate with staff and the public. And I think there's ways that we can do that.
Okay, Terri?
Hi, I'm Terri and I'm running for Position Four. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Catherine tonight for hosting and putting this on and for everyone at home watching. I have been volunteering in the school before my kids were enrolled. My son is now twenty and graduated. I had a lot of fun helping with the auctions, helping in the classrooms. You can see the impact that you have directly with the teachers. You know, the work that you do might give them a minute to sit down and have lunch or just make the day easier for them. And so that's the reason why I'm running is that I want to make the process, the systems, work better for our staff, our students, and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Mills. I'm running for District Five. And I am a born and raised in North Kitsap resident. My community has always been the Kingston area. I feel strongly that our schools need the community feel to them that we need to know our kids to know and our staff to know they're supported, that they belong, that we really aim to educate equitable across the board and that we support our staff in doing so. It's really important to me that our kids feel connected when they're at school, not that just it's a place they have to go, but that it's a place where they're known and they're, you know, can be called by name and walk down the hallway and feel confident in who they are and happy with their surroundings and just overall have a good experience for all.
Okay, thank you. Next question, how would you engage and involve parents, students, staff, and community members in the decision-making process of the school board? And Natasha, you get to go first on this one.
So this is, I'm really excited about doing these things. We can rebuild the, I've heard that there was an equity committee before COVID. I think that that needs to be reignited. We need a discipline policy committee in order to respond to some of the requirements that OSPI and the legislator have put forth. I think that going out into the schools and being present and listening to our communities is important. I believe that they have the solutions to any of their needs. They know what those things are. I, I want to create two-way communication, so responding to emails and really just inviting them into our meetings and increasing public comment and increasing that ability to really hear and then respond. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Beverly?
Hi, well, I really wanted to say that we have a family involvement plan in our policy list. And it includes communicating with parents, a two-way communication, of course, and parent information nights and programs where parents can help establish a home environment and support for learning at home. And student learning, ways for information to flow back and forth, and volunteering, of course, at the school, and also school decision-making. These are commitments that we already have in our family policy involvement plan. And I think we just need to start looking at those things and making sure they happen. I know during COVID, we didn't have very many committee meetings. And now it's time to open up the doors and get the people in and let them share their opinions.
Thank you. Terri?
We definitely need to form committees back again. But we need to have informal, casual, but close relationships with our community members outside of the school board, of the meetings. The meetings can be hard sometimes to get to. They are early in the evening. And some people don't like to speak in public. So if we can have a relationship with our community where they approach us and we understand their cultures, we go to their community centers, into their homes, and we are participating in what makes them unique, then we can bring their voices into our decision-making and policies. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I think it's really important that in order to open up communication, we really work on going into our communities. One easy start to that, I think, is that we rotate going into the schools and having sort of community opportunities that way as well, on top of some other ideas that I think would be easy to implement. I think it's really important, you know, during this campaign, which has been long-going now, I've noted that people really, in our communities, want to give their input. They have wonderful things to share. They have feedback to give on their experiences. They want to give their input. And we need to open up the lines of communication to better allow for that to happen. As Terri said, they might be busy at work. They might be unavailable. They might not be able to sign on at the right time or what have you. There's many barriers to that communication. And I think any way we can open that up, there's lots of ways we can do that. I would suggest first off, starting to go into the communities.
Thank you. Mike?
All right, thank you. So I think the best way to engage the community is just as a school board director, being accessible. So for example, myself, I make sure that I read all emails from the community. I spend multiple hours a week responding to those emails and phone calls, also listening to public comment and actually taking that and using that to form my decision-making. I'm also a member of the Facilities Committee. We're constantly asking the public to join those committees. You guys, the other candidates mentioned financing committees. We definitely need public participation on that. Through school connections and school visits, like very fortunate to get to meet with teachers and students. The district has also rolled out Parent Square. It's a great communication tool for parents. And most importantly, that also translates communications into multiple languages so that it's accessible to all families.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the next question is, and some of you mentioned this a little bit, but would you change how the school board meetings are governed? Would you support full discussion of issues at public meetings? And would you change the public comment process? Beverly, we'll start with you.
Yes, is the short answer. First of all, when I first started here in North Kitsap, the podium wasn't in front of the audience. It was to the side, which really made it more accessible to the people sitting in the audience to see what was going on. Also, the speaker could see both the school board members and the audience. The other thing is, we need to open it up for 24 hours before the meeting to give people time to sign up. I do think we have to limit the amount of time, like we do now, to 10 different people to speak. But I still think that's got to be a better way of giving people the time they need to sign up anytime during the day before the meeting.
Okay, thanks. Terri?
My concern with the public comment is there's little opportunities for engagement with the board when you're not in the meeting. And I think three minutes would be adequate, would we have breakout sessions afterwards? Like the bond is a very big proposal that is coming up with a lot of money and a very long time commitment. There'll be a lot of questions that are going to come from the community. And one question that somebody might ask might make somebody think of a different question to ask. So I would definitely like to see our board meetings more welcoming, more casual, and at a more accessible time. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I would also change the format of the board meetings. I echo a lot of what's been said already. In addition to, we may need to look at what time the meetings are. It may be more advantageous for families and community members to participate if it wasn't so early in the evening. We also currently do not record them, so they can't even watch them later. So I think we need an option too, where even if you can't attend it live, that you can re-watch it, you know, at a later time and make it available that way too. And then also update the public comment, you know, way that you sign up and sign in. I know there's always been a sign-up kind of a protocol for that, but I think we can look at the policy on how we're handling that in practice. I don't think that it's advantageous for a lot of families that may have barriers to access to be able to do so freely and openly like they should be able to. So yes, there are some changes, I think.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I think the short answer is yes. I think myself as a school board director and the other directors and administrative staff are always welcoming input on how we can change and improve board meetings. A great example of that is the shift from solely in-person meetings to Zoom meetings. I think that that gives more people a chance to watch and participate in the Zoom meetings. So again, that was an example of feedback. I think that we need to be very careful of balancing accessibility versus the administrative staff's requirements. You know, we need to respect their time and also make sure that they're focusing on education too. An example, if we open it up for 24 hours, you can't just have that be online. There's certain people that can't sign up online, so it needs to be in person too. So we'd have to station somebody there for 24 hours in the room, which may not be the best idea. Thank you.
Okay, Natasha?
So currently, you can only sign up online. If you come in person, you're not able to sign up and speak. It is important that a person signs up because we want it reflected in our minutes, who spoke and when. So I believe that, that transitioning the inequitable policy of only being able to sign up online into something different is important. I don't think, I also agree that they need to be recorded. Then they can be uploaded and translated so that they can be accessible in other languages. I do understand why there's a three-minute limit. But I really believe most of the time, school board meetings are boring. So if a lot of people show up and want to talk, I would like to give them that option in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, one part of the question came from our website where the public were able to ask questions. And it's, what strategies would you employ to make our schools a welcoming place for all students, including students of color, LGBTQ plus students, and students with disabilities? Then I was thrilled. For the first time ever, we got questions from a high school civics class at Kingston High School. And their question was simply, how will you actively embrace and promote cultural diversity? And Terri, we'll start with you.
I'll get the hard question first. Let's see, I don't have the answer as a white woman of privilege to best serve that. I can listen. I can care. I can put the people in power that have those answers. We do need a diversity, equity, and inclusion board that helps put these practices and policies in place. But I think the best thing that I can do is support them and give them what they need to get the work done.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I am fortunate to be a Kingston High School parent. And I will say, I'm proud of our high school. Most recently, I see them really trying hard to be inclusive. But I think that district-wide, we would really benefit from a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee board. I don't want to be the one telling the district how we're going to do that. I want to hear what the community and the district feel on how we're going to do that. And then I want to support and implement those ideas. There are vast knowledge and vast diverse community out in our school district that have way better ideas and input on this. And I know that it's always a team approach on a board and that we could work together, I'm sure, to really embrace some of the feedback that we receive, to really put into work what the community wants, what the schools want, to be more equitable and diverse.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, thank you. So in my opinion, the best way to make schools welcoming for all students, it's not the community that's going to do this. It's the students. We need to really empower the students and listen to the students about the best way to go and do this because they have great ideas. They're the ones that are in it every day to do that. I've been very happy to see the focus in all of our schools right now towards empowering student voice. And that's not just empowering, you know, your typical ASB students. That's taking a cross-section of all student populations and forming student voice groups. So I've been very happy to see that, that the administration is participating in that. There was even an event recently in the beginning of the school year where those students got to provide direct feedback to the teachers about the best way to type of this issue. And I think we need to continue to listen to our students and take the great ideas that they have.
Okay, thanks. Natasha?
Catherine, could you repeat the question again?
Well, it's the simple one from the students was, how will you actively embrace and promote cultural diversity? And this includes all, all different types of.
Thank you. So I'm Alaska Native. My son is Port Gamble-Squallum, and he's also Hispanic. I love rich culture. I think representation matters. So I will just be me, and that embraces and brings culture and that lends to the board. I think that's why it's important that I represent so many cross-sectionalities. I'm a working-class family. I've had lived experience of poverty and incarceration. And so I am in myself, all of those different. But I also don't have the answers for any of those other communities that I don't represent. So that's where we bring in community and we come together and we do it in a way that is collaborative. And working with the tribes in a real strong government-to-government relationship will make a huge difference. Thank you.
Beverly?
Yes, I agree with Mike that we've been doing some real good work on the theme of belonging and making kids feel like there's opportunities for them to share their opinions and do some decorating and things like that that is their own. I've talked to both tribes and the people that I spoke with that represent each of the tribes. They would like to see more of their cultural art being displayed throughout the buildings. And then, of course, we know that our Hispanic families over at Vinland, there is the Du Language Program where we spend a lot of time helping the kids celebrate their heritage, but also sharing it with the kids that aren't Hispanic. So I think that there are some things that are happening and they could be broadened and done at all the schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, this sort of leads into the next question too. There was a North Kitsap School District Leadership Training with Suquamish Chairman Leonard Forsman on October 3 of this year at the Suquamish Administration Building. Were the candidates invited to this training? Stacy?
I don't believe the candidates that I recall at the moment were invited to that training. Working for Port Gamble-Squallum Tribe, I have been a part of witnessing the trainings we've held here in the past. But no, my candidacy did not offer me that opportunity that I am aware.
Mike?
So I attended that training. I thought it was very valuable. I attended as a school board director and then with the teachers and staff of the school district. It's just one more way that we can improve our government-to-government relationship with the Suquamish tribe. We have our government-to-government meetings. We've committed to conduct additional meetings quarterly. And then we have, you know, one-time trainings such as that one too. And it's just really important to hear the perspective from the members of the tribe and tribal council. So I was very happy to attend that.
Natasha, were the candidates invited?
I do not remember seeing that. I'm endorsed by the Suquamish tribe. I don't remember getting that invitation. There is something coming up on November 7. And there's some government-to-government relationship trainings, but I did not notice one from October 3 that I would have attended.
Okay, Beverly?
No, I wasn't invited. I did go out and speak with each of the tribes though. And it was great because they were real open, happy to talk to people. They have open meetings, kind of like a school board meeting, council meetings, that they'll interact with you.
Okay, Terri?
So I find it troubling that we weren't invited. Beverly and myself are running for an open seat. Stacy is running unopposed. So one of the three, two of the three of us will be on board. I would have liked to have been invited to that. I would have enthusiastically have gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Here comes another one from the Kingston High School Civic Students. How do you plan to distribute both funds and students between Kingston and Pauls Bowe Schools during your term? And Mike, we'll start with you.
Sure, so how do I plan on distributing funds to Kingston High School? That's not really within my role as a school board director. As a school board director, we approve the budget, the top-line budget. But we don't really get into distributing funds between the individual schools. And I'm sorry, Catherine, what was the other question in addition to funds?
Because there's an unequal balance there between.
Yeah, that's really just based on where the students live. And there are also signature programs within the school district. So if one of the students chooses to participate in a program at North Kitsap High School or Kingston, we have many students that do that and actually switch between the schools throughout the school day.
Okay, Natasha?
Yes, I believe that this question stems from, because it came from a Kingston High School classroom, what really is inequitable. It's apparently inequitable if you attend Kingston and North Kitsap. And what I hear is the story of enrollment and families are choosing North Kitsap. But then it's a cycle because North Kitsap gets so much more investment that Kingston really is feeling that they aren't getting what they need. Kingston High is eligible for Title I funding. And I'm not sure why we don't apply for that and fund in that way for that school. But I really want to look at that. And I hear you, Kingston High, and I want to address that. It's important.
Okay, Beverly?
I've also heard this concern expressed by parents that the choices of classes are not as, there's not as many choices at Kingston. But there is a transportation bus that goes between the two. So that if there's a class, like the robotics class, that they might want to take at Kingston, they can rotate between the two. And I'm sure that athletics is probably part of the problems too. And that is hard to, you know, solve right away. We need to look into this though more and try to understand. We need to look into this though more and try to understand how the kids can be dispersed more equitably. But I still think it has a lot to do with where you live and um what kind of classes you want to take. But the buses seem to be a problem cuz they only run twice a day. So maybe there's a way to get transportation um more often.
Okay, Carrie?
My children attended the two smallest elementary schools in North Kitsepp School District. And it was a wonderful experience to be in such a small school where everybody knew, all the staff members knew every student's name. They were welcomed. It was, it was magical. And when you talk to staff members who actually uh were employed at Bridalbrook, they'll, they'll get all nostalgic with you and tell you how much they loved it and what made it great. So when I look at Kingston and knowing that the enrollment is smaller, rather than grow it and trying to make it compete with North, I think we need to partner with the staff members of Kingston and find what we can do to make it that special and that magical at its size. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I don't know that I have the answer to this. I know that um my kids have felt it. We felt it. Um not only do, are the offerings not the same, they have declined. They have declined annually, it seems. And um parents have been very boisterous, reaching out to me um recently about this. Um I don't, again, I don't know what the answer is. I do know that as a board member, a a role in that is advocating for the needs of the district and its students um with local, state and federal policymakers. And I tend to do so for all of our students, including our ones that feel that their education is inequitable, which goes against the role of public education, providing an equitable education. I'm very concerned that we are continuously just labeled as a small school, but without any further thought going into how we can do better. And I would look to do that um and be creative about it as well.
Thank you. I think some of you have possibly answered this question um in some of your previous answers, but um the question comes as should the school board meetings be recorded and posted on the website? Like city council, councils, commissioners, county commissioners, and legislative hearings are. Um and Natasha, we'll start with you.
Yes, I believe that um at during the primary forums, lots of ideas came up about maybe letting a student record it. Um getting it online and downloaded is the first step in making sure it's translated so that people can access it in their language. Um also, uh our words matter. And so it's important that we have an accurate reflection of the discussion in the room for all sorts of reasons. It should be recorded and easily accessible for transparency.
Okay, Beverly?
Well, it I think it should be recorded too, but it seems like a lot of decisions have already been made by the time the school board meeting starts. Um because it doesn't seem like they're really doing a lot of back and forth asking questions. Uh I think maybe the superintendent talks with the board members. Mike would know better about how this works. Uh it's real convenient that the meetings only last an hour. Um and maybe part of that is because of some um front loading before the meeting starts. The other problem that I've experienced the last four times I've been at a board meeting is people aren't speaking into the microphone and it's very hard to hear uh what's being said.
Okay, um Carrie?
Well, absolutely, they should be recorded. And I find it troubling that they stopped being recorded. And like, you know, Beverly had said, we have, we can't, if you're on Zoom, you can't hear the guest speakers. If you are in the audience, sometimes you don't hear the speakers who are on the side panels uh to the board. So it's uh, it's something that we need to remedy. Um and I've already complained to the board about it, so I hope that that can be fixed um. Especially by the next board meeting, not tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I'll say it again. Yeah, I think we definitely, um they should be recorded. If it's an open public meeting per the Open Public Meetings Act, it's easy enough that the recorded version be published and accessible um, you know, to to everyone to watch. And I think there's ways now, our technology has made it so that we can somewhat easily do that. And I think we need to be exercising that option. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Uh so should meetings be recorded? Uh yes, they should be recorded. Uh they're actually required to be recorded uh by July of twenty twenty-four by law. The school district is working right now to comply with that. Uh there's a lot of technical challenges, as Catherine, you would know, you know, dealing with a forum like this. Uh but I'm confident that the school district is working through those and will be ready to comply uh by that time. And again, I would mention um uh you know, I feel that the current board in the district is always looking for ways to improve the um the school board meeting process. So, you know, we welcome uh any recommendations and we've been receiving those and and um that's been very helpful. So appreciate that.
Okay, and I just, on a personal note, or for the League of Women Voters, this forum is being recorded. And in a couple of days, it will be posted on our website. So I don't personally do that. But the people that do it say it's not a hard thing to do. You press the button, record. And then as far as posting it, I'm not sure how that works, but we do it. Because we believe that a lot of people may not be accessible tonight to watch the forum. And so in a couple of days, about the time their ballot comes on the twentieth, they can go to our website and watch the complete forum. So um anyway, I just had to butt in with that. Okay, the next question for you all. Um let's see, where are we? Ah, okay, what is your stance on removing books from school libraries or classrooms based on the subject matter of gen- gender, sexuality, or race? Beverly?
Well, first of all, um I'm not against, I'm I'm not for banning books. The way the book, library books are purchased is the librarian at the school gets a budget. Then she uses that money, or he, to make purchases. They make that decisions solely on their own. There's no uh double checking to see what titles are being selected. Um and then also at the end of the year, the librarian does have um the ability to discard books. And they go through their stacks and um need need to make room for new books they've purchased. And um they discard books. So it's in the hands of the local library in in our district.
Okay, um Carrie?
It is important that our books and the library classrooms and that our counselors have for our students represent the struggles, the challenges, the experiences they're going through in life. And so we need to make sure that our libraries are protected, the books within them, the process of how our librarians select the books, cuz we hire people with degrees who've read the entire library to put that library together. We need to make sure that they are protected legally uh to select the books that will best serve the population of their school. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I feel it's really important that we rely on our trusted school staff, that there are books available that students can um have the world of knowledge that they're gonna need when they graduate into our world. Um so that they have the opportunity to learn about and access about other stories and about curriculum that's important in the world around them. So it's really important to me that we entrust in our librarians and our qualified staff and professionals um that we work with them as a partnership to be aware of, you know, how that, I guess, works and involve our learning department and curriculum department when possible. And that we really um work to be very inclusive. Um just like we want to be inclusive in our our students at our schools, we want to be inclusive of the reading materials that those students would have access to. So I think it's really important that we um strive to provide a wealth of different information and knowledge in our libraries.
Okay, um Mike?
Yeah, this is essentially a policy question. Um the North Kitsepp School Board in the school district um has has numerous policies and and this one is covered under one of those. It's important that those policies are in accordance with state law and follow those. And that's uh one of the primary duties as a school board director. Um but essentially, I think it's important uh that we trust our uh professional North Kitsepp School District staff um so that um, you know, and um again, trust them when they make decisions like this. Thank you.
Um Natasha?
Yes, I um I do believe that we should trust our staff um and make sure that our staff has the freedom to make those decisions based on student need. Um books open up the world yet to be imagined, and representation matters. And so it should be important to us. Yes, there are policies. Um but as we step forth and um set a tone in our district, I think that it will be important that we value representation. We make sure that we're our history, that history that we're teaching is accurate. That um the books that are available and the learning materials for these students are applicable so that they can see themselves represented in um in their learning environment, so they know they belong in the building. Thanks.
Okay, um here's another one from the Kingston High School Civic Class. These kids are, um and I understand from their teacher that they spend a lot of time discussing a lot of issues and coming up with their questions. And I hope some of their questions were also covered in some of the questions that were submitted by the general public too. But this question is, what are your priorities for the North Kitse- for the school board's budget? Well, the the district's budget, because it's the board's responsibility. But um so what are your priorities? And Tara, you get to go first with this one.
My priorities with the budget, it's already been submitted and approved. So that's the working budget for next year. Uh I think there just needs to be um more committees that are involved with it. And as a community, we rank what's important to the community, cuz it's my priority is what the community wants. It's what the students need and the staff needs to do their to do their job to educate the youth of our community. And I'm gonna keep my agenda out of anything that uh that I personally want other than to work what, to make what works for the students successful.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, within the duties of the school board, I would work to make sure um that you know, we had a working knowledge of the budget and and what goes into that, that we give a timeline for how we're going to be reviewing it, for how we're going to be taking community feedback, that we provide an upfront and transparent system of how the budget has come to. And we have staff for that, so we're gonna rely on them heavily. But we want to do that in open public forum, right? So that way we have the knowledge coming from the people who who know it best. Um so that we can make sure that the information is out there and available to discuss. And that we really have the opportunity to advocate for our schools, our students and our staff and what their needs are and the best way um to do that. I know there's different budgetary allocations that you always have to consider. Different fund sources can only be used in in certain ways. And I'm very familiar with that in my work with federal grants and government programs. So that's always important too, to be mindful of.
Okay, Mike?
Uh yeah, I would just echo what Stacy said. That basically anytime you talk about uh budgeting, there's different uh pots of money uh can't be crossed in between. So I'll assume that we're talking about the operating budget um versus capital funds or transportation funds. Um with the operating budget, um my priority is to maintain the uh the board mandated mandated um fund balance. Um that fund balance is very important to ensure that we maintain the long-term financial stability of the district, which is one of our priorities as a school board director. Uh the majority of our budget goes to staffing. So um if, you know, any challenges, it affects our ability to um uh keep our schools open and to educate our students, which should always be our priority there. Um and then I would just encourage people to get involved in the budget process. It's not just something that's created by the school district. Again, there is the finance committee that we talked about before, um and then participating when those budgets are um are presented to the board.
Okay, um Natasha?
So there is a, an operating budget. It's already been created and approved. So by people that have an experience in this, so um I would say that my um what I could affect or what I could uh choose to look at is enrollment. Um I continue to hear that enrollment is down. Um I have seen why people are leaving, but I want to, I want to seek out that data so that we can have a better idea of where our students are going and why, so that we can um really have robust programming that will keep them. Like uh the, our online academy is capped and that affects our bottom line. We don't have as much money because we're not educating our students. Where are students who are fifth-year stu- seniors going? I just have some questions about how to improve our budget. Thanks.
Okay, um Beverly?
Yeah, the uh budget committees that we've had in the past, I've been on some of them and on uh budget committees at the building level. And it is complicated, as uh Mike suggested, because we get money from federal government, state government, we get money that has strings attached. And uh we need to work with our directors so that we understand what money can be allocated in different ways. Just for example, the transportation between North Kitsepp and Kingston High School. Um it's seems like a logical answer to the problem, but it's cost money. So looking at some of our uh test scores, I would say that we need to be putting a lot more money into academic coaches and uh helping kids succeed in math and reading at all grade levels.
Okay. All right, the next question is um regarding the no-confidence vote by teachers. Have you met with teachers to listen to their concerns? Stacy?
Well, this is a tricky one as a candidate. Um it gets very complex when you're a candidate running for board as to um sort of what, what parameters there are. I have spoken to some district um employees just in general, but nothing specific to um being on the board, I guess. I welcome their input um and hope that I'm better able to do that at some point and that they are feeling more open to do so. Um I think right now there's a little bit of uncertainty, I guess, from the staff and teachers that goes with that. Um I'm endorsed by the teachers' union. I've spoken, you know, with the teachers' union for that endorsement. I would like to know more. I would like to have the opportunity to um speak with staff more. And I think it's important that in the role of the school district director, we get to do so.
Okay, uh Mike?
Uh yeah, so I think it's important to keep in mind that when that vote occurred, uh that their uh NKEA in the district was entering into a collective bargaining agreement. So out of respect So out of respect for that, I don't want to comment on the vote and respect for the people that were conducting the bargaining on both sides. I would say I was very happy to see that the district and NKEA reached an agreement. It was overwhelmingly approved by approximately 99% of the teachers. I, you know, I mentioned before, first I'm a parent, so I really value that partnership that I have with teachers as a parent. And the same way that they're accessible to me as a parent, I try to always be accessible to teachers as a board director. So again, I really welcome the ability to engage with them during school board visits, excuse me, during school visits, during school connections that we happen. And I just continue to really appreciate the hard work that the teachers do.
Okay. Natasha?
I think what Stacy was touching on is some of the sensitivity in our district that to keep confidence and maintain confidentiality, because our staff, many of our staff are struggling. And the fact that they would make a vote and say that they have no confidence, and then it would be dismissed as a bargaining tool is, makes it clear that they maybe don't feel heard, because then when they speak up, it's, they're told that it wasn't real. And I feel for them, sitting in this forum and hearing that suggested that they did it ingenuously is sad.
Okay. Beverly?
Well, I'm in kind of a unique position because I've taught in North Kitzep for 20 years. And some of the concerns are being addressed. And I talked to the president of the union to ask him what gains were made. And he told me that there were some gains that were made that were real helpful and significant. And he's open to telling people what those are. The, one of the problems is top-down management. And sometimes the school board does look like the decisions have already been made before the board meeting starts. So that top-down management is a tricky and sensitive thing to teachers. We work hard to be experts in our field, and we expect to be treated like that. And sometimes our opinions are just dismissed and not listened to. And I hear that from teachers in many different settings.
Okay. Carrie?
So if I'm elected to this position, one of the first policies I'm gonna address is that school board candidates and directors cannot speak with employees of North Kitzep School District. We need to make sure that our staff, not only our teachers in Paris, but our entire staff feels valued, that they are appreciated, that they're empowered, that they have opportunity for growth, that they love being here and they want to stay. I am honored to have the teachers' union endorsement, and I look forward to having a closer relationship with the teachers and getting to know how I can best serve them. Thank you.
We pretty much reached the end of our questions. I know you're very sorry to have to go away from this forum and relax a little. But I think we've, I think everybody's done a good job in answering the questions. So what I would like to do now is to give time for your closing statements. But I do want to, before the closing statements, I did mention that this was recorded, is being recorded and will be posted in a couple of days at our website. Our website is l w v-kitzep.org. But I do need to let everybody know, the recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Kitzep and may not be used for any purpose without the explicit written permission of the League of Women Voters of Kitzep. So that said, let's, let's do your minute and a half closing statement. And we'll go down the line that you all will be on the ballot again. So Mike, you get to make your closing statement first.
Okay, thank you. So first, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters of Kitzep for taking the time to organize this candidate forum. In addition to the answers given this evening, I would like voters to know that transparency is very important to me. During every interaction with voters, I've always been sure to answer all questions openly and honestly so that voters can be confident that nothing in my background would affect my ability to partner with the parents and children of the North Kitzep School District. I've also been transparent that as a school board director, I would only serve the interests of the parents and children of the North Kitzep School District. School board directors are nonpartisan and should only serve the interests of their local community. For this reason, my campaign is 100% self-funded. I have not accepted money or assistance from special interest groups, political groups or political parties. I have no personal agenda. My only goal is to serve the entire North Kitzep community as a school board director. I would also like voters to know that I will continue to prioritize accessibility during my service as a North Kitzep school board director, and I'm always available by phone and email. I value the public comments at our school board meetings, and all feedback I receive from students, parents and the community is utilized in my decision-making. Most importantly, I'm committed to conducting myself in a professional and cooperative manner. I will continue to work with the parents, the community and the school district to ensure that we are all in for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Natasha?
I'm really excited for the opportunity to serve our district. I love our community and I love students. And I will say that I would like a more transparent process in our, in the way that we are making decisions. Currently, the meetings seem to be front-loaded. The answers are not, questions are not asked during the meetings. As far as the financing of my campaign, I would like to address that. Mike has not filed any reports, and he's a full filer. So, but I have, I, I knew the process, and I have gotten a lot of endorsements, and I have support from people all over America because of the work that I've done for years. People believe in me, and I have a broad range of support. I got a lot of money from my endorsements. And, but I am transparent, you can go and look at all of my spending and where all my money came from. And I was selected by an organization called First Mile. You can look into it because they believe in my ability to lead, because I represent our community, I represent all the intersections. And I, I'm, I'm me. I'm just me. I don't have an agenda. Thanks.
Okay. Beverly?
Thank you again for hosting this forum. I'm sure that we all want our children to be safe, feel included and respected at school. I have never met a parent who didn't want their child to be honest, trustworthy, respectful, kind, use self-control as they become independent, productive adults. I strongly believe that staff should team up with parents as equal partners in educating our children. Because of my experience in multiple areas of education, I'm equipped with a unique set of skills to be an effective board member. My whole professional career has been focused on understanding and meeting the needs of each child and improving their academic performance. I came to North Kitzep over 20 years ago as a literacy coach and a science coordinator. I've served as a specialist, a mentor, a classroom teacher in grades K through four. As a community advocate, I have connections throughout the company. We have lived in both South Kitzep, Central and North. Glenn and I have 13 grandchildren, and they show us the need for more focus on academic subjects in school. Two are in college now, and they can articulate clearly the variety of experiences that were important to them in the younger years. Not all students are, need or want to go to college. We should support skills needed for various areas of postgraduate employment. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Carrie?
I see the role of a director is to be the eyes and the ears of the community. No one needs me to go in and tell them how to start the boiler, drive the bus or manage the classrooms. My role is to be well-connected within the community, to represent them and to bring their voices to our policies. I am very honored to have the endorsements that I've had. I think that it speaks volumes to the legwork that I've put in prior to seeking this office. I'm very honored to have the Suquamish Tribe, the Skollport Gamble Tribe, the teachers' union, the 23rd Legislative District Democrats and others. My full list can be seen on my website. I'm disappointed tonight, Catherine, that you didn't ask me a question about the bond, because I think this is a big decision that the entire community needs to get involved in. We're putting together a nearly $250 million bond. While levies run for two to four years, bonds are 20 to 30-year projections. So we need to make sure that we get the numbers correctly, that we service our community correctly and it's reflective of what best is in their best interest. I hope that you all come to the meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 and listen to the bond. And just really quickly, I want to say I never want to see a bond fail. So this isn't because I want it to fail. I want us to get it right so we don't live with a 30-year mistake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Stacy?
Well, thank you, everyone, in your work, the League of Women Voters, for putting on these forums. And even though it's not my most comfortable probably way to engage folks, I really like to engage audience, and this is kind of different in that way, but thank you. And also, I just want to appreciate Melanie's statement. And I, I wasn't anticipating that level of support. So it really caught me off guard a little bit, and I just appreciate her putting forth that statement. And it means a lot to me, coming from a very knowledgeable and very skilled person who's very, very well-qualified as well. And I also just want to thank the community for coming out to vote big in the primary and for, you know, I didn't get the appointment to this seat twice. However, getting the votes from the community and my peers is so important. And I just hope you all turn out November 7th and vote and use your voice, because our vote is our voice. No matter how you do so, make a plan to vote. And so we can follow up on the very important topics you've heard about tonight that we can take the roles and duties of the school board and continue to move it forward in a good way and work with our tribal governments and work with our students of all backgrounds and just provide the best, most equitable education possible in North Kitzep schools. I'm a proud North Kitzep resident, lifetime resident, and I just want to continue to move that forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. You know, these are some of the, they're my most favorite event that I do for the League of Women Voters. They may not be yours. And, you know, we, we had, I just looked it up. We have, we had around 50 people tuning into this tonight. And we'll have more that will watch the recording later. So sometimes these Zoom meetings bring out more people than do in-person meetings. So they can still have their pajamas on at home when they're watching if they want. I'm, not me, I have a nice sweater on. And Terry, the, the question about the bond did not come in in any of our questions from the public. And I think it's because they don't know about it yet. They haven't even heard about it at this point. There haven't been in meetings or things that where they could ask questions. So.
Catherine, will you give the timeline for the bond, please?
Well, there, it will be presented to the, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be presented to the board tomorrow night. And then the meeting two weeks later, the resolution.
Yeah. So I think the most important thing to point out is that that bond has gone through the facility and the finance committees. You know, it's not being created by the school district, it's being created by the, by the community. They've had a lot of input on that, and we, we still need more input. So yes, please, please participate.
So it's being presented to the board for the first time tomorrow night. And then there will be a vote on the resolution to put it on the February ballot at the next October meeting of the board. It could wait till November to vote on it. But anyway, I, we don't want to get in a big debate or discussion now about it. But please encourage all of your friends and acquaintances to tune into the board meeting tomorrow night, because that'll be when it's first presented, and hopefully questions will be asked. One thing I always want to say at the end of these, we have some problems in other parts of the county about candidates being rude to each other and, or not following the rules or whatever. And I am always so proud to be in charge of North Kitzep forums, because people here are very nice to each other. And you all have shown the respect to your opponent, even though you disagree on issues, you make those clear. But you, you don't yell or scream or call them names or anything. So I love you all, and I love that you're running. I served on this North Kitzep School Board back in the dark ages. And it was a very, it was a good experience. So those of you that make it, I hope it is a good experience for you too. So good night. Put your feet up. Have a glass of wine if you want, and relax. So that's the end.
Thank you so much, and thank you to everyone who tuned in.
Okay, thank you.